Wow.
It's Susan and Mary.
Thank you.
Well, it's okay, because it's over.
It's fine.
Yeah. Or is it's open session?
Oh, that's right.
Recording in progress.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go.
Can everyone hear us through the?
Yeah.
They can hear? Okay.
So we'll adjourn, um, uh, begin the, um, you know, meeting for today. Uh, we need to do the call order and then flex.
Okay. All right.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board meeting protocol.
We'll go ahead and review our board meeting protocol. Our session is being recorded and it's open to the public and it's also being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. Public comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item up to 20 minutes. The board consent, the board president may increase or decrease time allowed for public comments. Public can also make comment Zoom teleconference. You can notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom. And you'll be identified by your spelling in Zoom when called upon to speak. To make a public comment in person, please complete a public comment form indicating the item you would like to address and the comment cards are right there at the door. Email public comment can be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the meeting and we post it to the website with the agenda. Limit is 450 words. We did not receive email public comment from the meeting tonight. Board vote connectivity, each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. And should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. We do not, um, or trustees that are, um, with this tele, uh, remotely today and trustee case report, her voice not with us tonight. And regular meetings, although this is not a regular meeting, shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to, uh, item D, the routine matters, uh, new business. You know, the first on the agenda is two, one, two point four, five, nine. Public hearing and board review of the elementary districts 2023, 2024. L cap, local patrol accountability plan.
Okay. Thank you. I just saw the screen. Do we need? Wait, are we okay? Are we still live or just want to double check for?
It's there.
We're okay?
Yeah.
Even though we don't see us?
I think April will tell us if she.
Okay, April's on. Okay, great. Good. So she will tell us if she can't see or can't hear. Okay. Perfect. All right. So thank you. Tonight is our opportunity to review the LCAP with the board and our public. We've had the LCAP posting on our district website for at least a few weeks now. And with the, uh, capability of the public providing comment for us as well. We sent that information out in a newsletter. We sent it out blackboard email and also a text message. We also had a trustee Catherine Harper that invited the community, uh, to give us feedback in the Gulf Herald. And so this year we did receive feedback from nine, um, partners in the community. So that was really good. Last year we didn't receive any feedback. So this is good that nine people responded. That's great. So what I, I wanted to start as we start to review the LCAP with you. Um, you know, this is really the opportunity for the board and any public that might join us here tonight or via Zoom to ask questions. Tonight's the opportunity to kind of go a little bit deeper before we take it for a vote, um, tomorrow. The first page I wanted to just highlight some of the feedback that we received from nine, nine partners in the community. We asked four questions. One, ninety-five, question five, which is open ended to give us any feedback. But the first question was, what is key to support student engagement and academic growth? And so a summary of that feedback was arts programs. That came up a couple of times in different, with these different questions. Instructional assistance to support in the classrooms. That came up in a couple of ways. Make learning fun and make connections to daily life experiences. And increase parent and teacher communication, which also came up in a few areas. Smaller class sizes and encourage students to ask questions or ask for help when needed. And then number two, what is key to supporting staff, staff growth and motivation? Increase teacher or staff salaries. Increased parent teacher communication, again, smaller class sizes. Goal setting and celebrating accomplishments. Increased appreciation from parents that was towards staff. And then administration setting high educational standards and expectations. Number three was what is key to improving student attendance? So that's a big part of our LCAP and our goals. The feedback was supporting learning environment, supportive learning environments. Arts program came up again. Make learning fun again, building relationships between teachers and students. And then weekly or monthly quarterly trimester prizes for students, which a lot of our sites have some incentives in place like that. Number four was what is key to improving safety at school? Some of the feedback was increased neighborhood officers being present during key times of the school day. Staff, parents and officers that are attentive and observant. More adults or eyes on campus. Keep doing what you're doing, gates, sign in, out system, et cetera. Keep the gates locked. Increased education on dangerous situation. Secure the front office entrance, um, hold identification of visitors and return when they check out. The little more feedback on this one was somebody suggested, for example, holding their driver's license when they come in to, to visit. And then that way they have to come and check out and get their driver's license. Um, somebody also suggested that maybe instead of taking their driver's license, because maybe they're gonna forget their license and, and, and things like that is, instead of the stickers, a lot of our school sites have stickers that say visitor when they sign in. Because all of our school sites have a sign in process and they check ID and then things like that, but they're not collecting any IDs right now. They don't hold them. But maybe we give them more of a badge like on a land here like we do for our substitute teachers, because then maybe you remember to come in and sign out versus just walking home with a sticker. So that might be a compromise instead of actually collecting a driver's license. Uh, number five was just open ended. Give us any other feedback or suggestions. Have school resource officers that engage with students. That did happen a little bit more this year. They started the character counts program again on our campuses. So that's a program our school resource officers. They facilitate that and they work with students. Partner with the Gulf Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Fish and Game, et cetera, to engage with students to increase positive influence of our officers. So that was another comment. So that was what, what we received from our, our community, our parents. And we know for sure one staff member. So any questions or clarification or?
That was my question was, it was a blend of, then nine was a blend of parents.
It was. Yes, they don't have to put their name, but they have to put their email.
Okay.
And so one of the emails was definitely an employee.
Right.
And then the other eight emails were outside of the district. They were Gmail accounts, Comcast, Outlook. They, they at least didn't use their staff email if they were a staff or whatever. Thank you. So next with that in our LCAP is the LCFF budget overview for parents. And so I would like to hold to summarize this for you. Turn it over to Nicole for this.
Sure. So this is a standard template that's used in our software system that we develop our LCAP in. And it's meant to just give parents an overview of what are our sources of funding? Put it in a pie chart, make it, you know, user friendly to look at. And then it explains, um, how many, how much we have total budgeted. And then it shows how much it's been LCAP. And then it, um, lists what's not in the LCAP. This is page three. I'm looking at, sorry, how you say that. And then increased improved services for high need students. As you know, you've heard the term un-duplicated pupil before. It's, it's the additional funding we get, the supplemental concentration. And so, um, part of what Donna will talk about are different actions that are targeted towards those students using those funds type thing. And then the last page just shows, um, that's, this is for current year update, not budget year. And the blue is how much we had budgeted back a year ago to spend on increasing improved services. And what we actually are estimated to spend is in the green. And so it's just kind of a high level visual for, for, uh, for parents type thing. Give them a little summary. You know, Donna's been, Donna, are you?
I can start though. Yeah, if there's no questions on this, this document has been, no, I guess the third year. Our third year of having a budget overview for parents. This was new with this new cycle or this last cycle of the LCAP. So just kind of a quick visual for parents, because as you know, the budget's so complicated. But at least you see the numbers of how much money the district is receiving, how much we're spending.
The LCFF, isn't it? Or are we gonna review that again next year? Right? Is it a three year?
Oh, the LCAP?
Yeah.
A brand new cycle.
Yeah.
Three year cycle.
Yeah, we're on the third year.
Yeah. So I can go ahead and start a little bit of a review, a summary starting. So now we're on page six. This is where the, the LCAP really starts. So we start with just general information, kind of the summary of our district. We've highlighted, you know, kind of our goals, our two LCAP goals have not changed. They've been the same. This is our third year for the same two LCAP goals. What we did add this year was our mission statement and our vision statement. Because that is new. We haven't had that in the past. And then we highlight really kind of the demographics of our district. We have about 3,700 students if you count preschool through eighth grade. We are the largest employer in the city still in Galt. Our ethnicity of our students is 59% Hispanic, 27%, white. And 58% of our families qualify for free reduced meals. And then 20% of our students are English learners and 19% are students with disabilities. We have approximately 550 staff members, district. Next, we get into our successes and this is our reflections and our successes. And this is reflecting on this last, this current year that we just finished. And you've seen a lot of these data sets already because we bring the information to you at each assessment window. But now it's just a summary of the LCAP. So ask Cleo if she would highlight a few areas for us.
Absolutely. I would like to highlight our local assessment data sets. And before I do that, I, I do want to remind you that reading at grade level by the end of third grade is the most significant predictor of future success, especially in high school and beyond. So it's critical that we always pay attention to the number of children that are reading at grade level by the end of third. So having said that, if you take a look on page seven, the district leading assessment, DRA. If you take a look at the second bullet, second to third grade increased by 22% exceeding the 10% growth target that we have set. If you take a look at MAP, which is on the following page, page eight. Both in reading and MAP, second to third grade met or exceeded the 5% target that we have set for, for MAP. So all this to say, um, that we're moving in the right direction. We obviously don't have 80, at least 80% of our third graders meeting and reaching the targets, but we are certainly growing and moving stronger in that direction than ever before. So those were the, the two local assessment data sets. And again, just the importance of always looking at third grade when we look at data sets.
Uh, that's actually very good news considering for post COVID.
Correct.
In our, our COVID era and we all know we slip away behind. Not just, uh, single, but like, you know, just states.
Yeah. Definitely.
In the Cal School survey, in that same area for successes, I think it's important to note student staff, staff safety. We met our targets on all of our groups, parents, staff and students. Created, it's high in student and staff safety. And you'll see that on the actions in our LCAP that we're continuing to focus on. Student and staff safety. In fact, on goal number two, I did just want to mention that the goal remains the same, but we did add the words, um, on goal number two, that deals with the whole learning development through social emotional learning opportunities. Was in a variety, a variety, a variety of environments. We did add in a variety of safe and supportive environments. We wanted to really bring that out. So those were just the two words that we added to the LCAP goal number two, student staff and safety. And then, um, along with that, it's the clean and well maintained facilities. We've spent a lot of focus on that in the past three years of this LCAP cycle. And, um, important to note that we met our target, caring, positive relationships with our students. Um, the next, oops.
No, thank you.
Any questions on successes? The, the reflections then go, um, kind of turn towards identified need. And as Lois and Cleo had mentioned, a lot of the data can be bring to you, um, on a trimester basis. But I did want to point out that we are, um, we have been identified by the state for differentiated assistance for two of our student groups. It's our homeless youth and also students with disabilities. And those, uh, the indicators were, first indicator was academic, both ELA and MAP, uh, MAP. And the second indicator was chronic absenteeism. Faces that was very, very high. Um, although for chronic absenteeism, it was, uh, the year coming back from COVID, which we had a lot of restrictions in place and, uh, our district was high. But these two student groups were very high. So you will see and you, when you looked at kind of our actions, especially actually in both. And goal number one for academics and goal number two for the safe supportive environments that we are really trying to, you know, focus on, on strategies to improve, um, academics for, for homeless youth and students with disabilities. Wanted to point out that for our homeless youth, um, we are fortunate in our Gulf Elementary School District and in our town that we do not have any children in our school district that are unhoused. That are, um, do not have a place to stay or they're, that they're living in shelters. All of them, all of our students with this, uh, excuse me, homeless students are doubled up. Which that's still a characteristic of homeless. They are doubled up, but I just thought it was important to know that. We do not have any unhoused students. That was the, we, the need. And then Cleo, did you have one of the assessment data? Or did you wanted to highlight or improvement?
Uh, you know, for MAP, reading, um, know that we are, um, we're, we're, well, as you know, we have MTSS coaches at each of the site for next year. And the thought is that any child that has been through the MTSS process, uh, children that are not growing in reading based on the DRA assessments, that they would receive additional services from the MTSS, um, TOSA, not coaching, sorry, TOSA. So we're excited to see that. We know it's a need. Again, we're not where we need to be. We're definitely on, on track as far as showing growth. But we still have children that we aren't able to reach. And I would say, and this is a very general comment, but it looks like many of the children that are not showing progress is due to, um, chronic absenteeism. So if the children don't come, it's hard to reach them regardless of what we've done, regardless of interventions. So going back to what Donna said, addressing the chronic absenteeism will be key moving forward. So hoping to raise that attendance and by default, I'm very confident that the achievement level, the performance levels will go up, but the children need to come.
Their attendance hasn't improved this year compared to last year.
It has, it's a great improvement, but um, when you look at the CIPSIS for this, for the elementary schools, when you look at that, just the average daily attendance, um, not so much the chronic absenteeism, because we're really going to get that data a little updated a little bit later in the fall. But all of our district wide and our schools were about 93% average daily attendance every day, which kind of is an indicator that our chronic absenteeism rate is going to go down. Because I think last year our average daily attendance was like in the eighties.
It was 90 and this year is 92.
92 for district. So. And the last part of the identified needs, it's on the Cal School survey also. You see several areas that we didn't, uh, we were below our target. I, you know, they actively seek the input of parents. Uh, in just a moment, we're going to go over, um, educational partners, engaging educational partners. And I think it's a, it's a matter of the input of parents is, it has to be at the site level. I think that we, we, you know, we work continuously at the district level at our advisory committee meetings, but I know that we are, uh, working with our sites to make sure that parents have, uh, have that meaningful input at the site level. Not just at the district level. That's an area of improvement and, um, adequate counseling and support services, because we, you know, hopefully we can get the word out to our parents, because we really do focus a lot on our mental health in our district, especially our social workers and counselors at every single school. McCaffrey will continue with two school counselors. Hopefully we'll be at a level of three mental health clinicians next year in our district. So there's room for improvement in several areas on the Cal School survey.
Donna, you have the Cleo. The next section are LCAP highlights. And this section is what we reported to the board last month. So if you look on page 11, it has our two goals and then it has the key actions under each of those goals. And this is what we reviewed with the board and the public last month. We haven't changed this since last month. Any questions or comments at this point? We'll keep going, but you know.
I'd be really happy to just, uh, again, um, on page 12, you'll notice that the comprehensive support and improvement, which they, they term a CSI at the, at the county level, that we have no schools in our, in our, um, district that have been identified for, uh, comprehensive support and improvement. And differentiated assistance is more of an informal and it's kind of the beginning stages. So we're hoping to improve before we move to the CSI, which would be the second one. The next section is engaging educational partners. And Lois began the meeting that, you know, and she shared the feedback from the nine, nine, um, well, wait, parents perhaps, community members and, and staff member. But throughout the year, we have worked really diligently in making sure that we are trying to engage our educational partners, our different groups. And I, I think last month I also kind of, uh, highlighted just our district advisory committee, our district English learner advisory committees, uh, our special education advisory committees. Um, next year, uh, we will be required on our district advisory committee to have some middle school students or students participate. That's going to be important. But on, in this section that you can see, we, um, added the dates of the meetings. It was important. Uh, we also, we also consulted with our, um, teachers union and our classified union as well and gave them an opportunity to feedback, uh, for feedback. And so although on the website, we might've only gotten nine, you know, nine opportunity, you know, community members that, um, that responded, we have throughout the school year been, um, um, working with our educational partners. And, and which include of course our school board. So that's why we try to every month, we bring you the data. And also on our board reports, you know, that we, our reports are always in some way, we try to, um, connect them to either goal one or goal two. So kind of gives you a, you know, ongoing.
I think starting probably around February and on every month, our DAC and DAC meetings have something related to LCAP to get feedback.
And so a lot of the, of the aspects of the LCAP, they were influenced by our educational partners. And then just there were a few that were mentioned. For example, the intervention TOSES, especially by our, by our, um, teachers. Really wanted those, the TOSES, parents, um, wanted us to, to continue the home study program. And we will be beginning next year with, I think it's the almost full, about 22 students. Staff development, um, one of our last feedback sessions with our, with our teachers, uh, with our teachers, they brought up the importance of some more training on classroom management, behavioral support and student engagement. So we made sure to add that to, uh, to the feedback. And we'll be working with, for working on that to provide additional staff development in the coming years. And any questions on engaging educational partners?
Change that to number three. We read, we all read this thing. I don't know. So yeah, every time I look at it again, I see a typo. I've already tabbed two. I'm like, how did we not?
Okay, yeah, it's not supposed to be one, two, two.
We'll fix that. I caught a couple. So if you see anything like that too, let us know. All right. So we start now with goal one. And so goal one has, we'll go over some of our metrics and there's 20 actions for this goal. It's a big one. So the, we really with this goal, we're focused to commit, um, professional development for teachers, specialists and support staff to meet the developmental needs of all of our students. And we use our local and our state assessment data to determine, you know, what we need to do. And especially based on closing the achievement gap. And, and as Donna has said, and Cleo, students with disabilities are English learners and homeless. Based on state and local data, look like we, we need some work there in closing the gap. And if you compare them to other student groups in our district. So that's what we're looking at a lot with these goals. One of the things for number two, this really came out, we've talked about this with the board, um, identified a need to adopt a math program. And so that's embedded through here and there's money allocated for that. And so we're in the beginning stages next year. Getting teachers the professional development, they need to understand the math standards and the curriculum. So that way they're better prepared to choose a math program when they pilot. So. And then English learners, making sure they also have access to curriculum and instruction that they need to be successful. And then a big part of this too, the last couple of years has been to increase opportunities for students based on student choice and engagement. We think, we've added the exploratory classes to the middle school. Last year we added Spanish foreign language opportunities. We're continuing that. Um, this next year we're adding art and hopefully CTE, still trying to hire a teacher, but it's, we've allocated funds for that. So trying to provide more opportunities for students. So then the next few pages for, for everything we do, we have to have a metric. We have to have a goal and there's a baseline, year one, year two, which year two is the most recent. That's our most recent data. And then after this next year, we will add our year three. How, how we're doing. So we just go through all of this, you, you've seen, you've seen all of the DRA, seen the data throughout the years, but you can compare baseline year one to year two, how we've, we've done the last couple of years. MAP reading is on here, MAP. The dashboard, we have no data for year one. We did not take dash the California state assessments in 21, 22. So you have fall of 2019. And then you have fall 2022. And then we will of course have fall 2023 here pretty soon. Results are starting to come out. A couple of pages on dashboard. Then participation rate for students, um, on IEPs, they monitor how many students, what percentage of students are taking the state assessments. They want to make sure that. They wanna make sure that um, we're testing all of our students. So we have a participation rate. The goal is ninety-five percent. So we just missed it. Now we're at ninety-four, because parents can opt out. Parents can opt out of state testing. Uh, definitely um, do not encourage parent, and that's any student. Not just students with disabilities or English learners or any, any parent can't opt out of state testing. But then it reduces your participation rate. And so you have to be careful that you're not encouraging students for parents to opt their. Their children out, because we are measured on that. So if you have too many families that decide not to have their children take the test, you are, that's a negative. For you. And we had a few more this last year, I think coming off COVID, because we didn't take the test the year before that opted not to take it. English learners rates are in here. Um, we have some metrics on students that were serving for summer school programs. Um, they're looking at. Miss assignments of teachers, we get zero. Um, zero in two thousand nineteen, we had miss assignments, year one, we had two, and then still CalPads has not come out yet for this last year. Professional development, all teachers have access. DAC, DAC, ELAC meetings. We're meeting in those areas. Uh, again, more giving feed, how we're getting feedback on all of the processes. And then we get into. Some Cal Schools information. We increased from last year, still not quite. The baseline, we had eight hundred and sixty-two parents respond. Then we dropped down to four oh two and now we're back at four eighty-five. So still wanna get that a little bit higher. The amount of parents that are taking the, responding on Cal School surveys. And then you get into all of the actions. And so we have twenty actions for this goal. And so what you have to do is you have to um. Well, there's a title, of course, for your action. You have to give a brief description. You have to identify the funding that you want to give towards that action. And then you have to determine if it's contributing or not. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get kind of into the budget, but. Contributing is if it's, the, if this goal or this action is contributing to our unduplicated population. So we'll show you that a little bit more in some of these spreadsheets, what that means. Any questions or comments on anything in goal one or metrics or actions? Page thirty-two, we move into goal two. So this is where we're looking at social emotional learning. We, we're looking at the data that demonstrates a need for this goal is our chronic absenteeism rate, suspension rates, um. Expulsion rates, um, those kinds of things and just feedback from. Staff, parents, students about the need for additional support to support social emotional learning. Social workers, mental health clinicians, and additional behavior support staff that we're, we've put in place and continue to add even for next year. We have metrics here. This is where you can see our, the first metric is our average daily attendance. You can see baseline pre-COVID. We were ninety-five. Um, then we dropped down to eighty-seven percent as of May twenty twenty-two. And then as of May twenty twenty-three, which is not official yet, it was just our.
This is not the official. In preparing that, what I did was this, I, I looked at our district. At our district attendance.
Um, we're at ninety-three percent. So we're going up, but definitely pre-COVID, we were more ninety-five, ninety-six percent. Chronic absenteeism, you'll get those reports here soon. Suspension rates. Fewer suspensions this last year. Expulsion rates, and we break it down by student group too. How many students in each student group have expulsions or suspensions. Zero percent for middle school dropout rate.
Would you would think that that's probably, you know, why would you have that? It is a requirement to me, that we do track. Suspensions and dropout rate as well. Yeah, middle school dropout rate.
Yeah, they really wanna see anything that is reported in our dashboard. And they report attendance, our expulsions.
Uh, on these like expulsions, right? They're, you know, find why they're expelled, expelled. They'll, they'll, you'll just say, hey, we got, we expelled five.
No, you know.
Explanations.
It's in, um, you can see that this, this is district data for year two, because it hasn't come out on Data Quest yet. But when um, it's submitted through CalPads, Christine um, Baptista, our student information system tech, um, technician. She does, and, and all the different types of expulsions and suspensions, all discipline is uh, is reported.
So we have to report by ed code, by the reason why. And so it is reported to the state, the reason why.
But uh, just the expulsion rate, a little concerning is that, you know, we, we did. We did expel five students, but that fact that all five of our students that we had expelled were, were Hispanic or Latino.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, we, we sure we have, explain like why these, why, why the expulsion.
Yeah, I mean, because you are in danger if this continues. There's something called disproportionate. And if you have a disproportionate number of any student group, you can be identified for improvement in that way. That's right, thank you.
And then we have quite a few um, data sets for you on the. Parent survey, house rules, and then also for the students. Fifth and eighth grade. It's six, seven, eight, sorry. And then also for staff, so we reported out. So you can see base, compare baseline year one to year two. Those data set. Facility reports and um, Williams lights. Thankfully, we've had zero, we're all three years on that. And then we get into actions. We have six actions for, for goal two. And again, we have a description, funding.
Any questions?
Questions or comments on either goal one or or goal two?
I just had a question on the facility, even just like some. Was there like a particular trend or reasoning behind those changes?
You know, it, it's just aging. Yes, aging and a lot of it's very minor. They give us very detailed reports, which is, which is good, but they give us reports for um. You know, a, a ceiling tile with a stain.
That was in our school accountability report cards. Do you remember that, the fit reports? And it was, we actually. Down and we, we took out the really minor ones. This is where that data comes from.
Well, ninety percent is good, so if you go to eighty-nine point nine, you're now like.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
So I, that's, that, and so if you look at our actual percentages, they're all.
In the eighties.
Yeah.
High eighties. But it did, yeah.
That's important to know.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And that's what I thought. Yeah, it's like a C. I know, it sounds, yeah, but no, we're in the eighties, but, but the goal is to be, to be good.
I have a question just about um, participation is, and I am trying to remember. This has been the case, but is there, you kind of incentive offer for parents or staff to participate in the survey? Or is that not something, I know that introduces a factor.
Yeah, we do, we, we ask, we give contract time. To, so we ask staff to, it's kind of required. We, this year we did it on a fifth Wednesday when they're required, we can give them an agenda. Or professional development or something for them to do. We gave them time to complete the survey. So we had more staff members completed this year, but we have not looked at, we have not given incentives for. And I know one of our grant partners, J, GMB, they just recently, there's a survey that they threw the grant. That they're having Fairsite parents take. And they, they are giving them incentives. It's easier to do when you're not a public.
Yeah, they draw a drawing for like a target or some type of a gift card, but also. The incentive was they, for the teachers, if they got at least eighty percent of the surveys back. The teachers got a, I think it was like a two hundred dollar gift card if they did. So that was incentives for teachers to encourage their parents. And then parents in turn also had a drawing where they handed out several of them.
Yeah. It's hard, you can't get out of public funds, yes.
Could each school do like a PTA like a.
A raffle idea, you know. Yeah, we could definitely, the PTAs can't. Yes, the PTAs can do in, do incentives. That's a good idea. Maybe we'll look into that. Parent groups can. Do a raffle or if we get, if Lake Canyon gets or Rook's gets a hundred parents participating, then. Coffee note, I have something.
Yeah. Next section.
Yeah, sorry, Donna.
Page forty-three is increased for improved services for foster youth, English learners and low income. Students. And I wanted to, to start by um, asking Nicole to. Um, just maybe give us a little bit of an overview on the, the funding and the required percentage. What that means, and then I'll talk a little bit more about the actions.
So the, uh, the projected LCFF supplemental concentration comes from the LCFF um, calculation. So it's the additional per ADA funding that we get based on our UPP percentage, which is around sixty percent. And then about, I don't know, now, four years ago. Or so, uh, the governor boosted the percentage of concentration um, that you've got from fifty to sixty-five percent. And so now they have you single out that fifteen percent, kind of what are you doing with the additional that they gave you to support these students? Um, and then there's a mathematical calculation that calculates your uh, projected percentage to increase and improve services. Um, and that just divides a few numbers together to get that. It's not, um, it's not entirely measurable. Um, as it doesn't have a results to it. Uh, so. Uh, for that, it's just kind of looking at what are you going to do to uh, increase and improve your services from say prior year.
And then what we were asked to do is we look at how we were using our supplemental and concentration funds. And the first section, what actions that we, that were um, we used and were. That were principally directed towards our unduplicated students, but it benefited school or district wide. And a couple of the examples of that is the support for high need students in our site-based certificated administration levels. We are using, um, there's some supplemental and concentration to continue to provide assistant principals. Of all those sharing sites in our school district. But we know that with additional supervision administration levels, it does benefit. Um, our high need students as well as our student population, and they're able to support the principals. They're able to really help individualize and look at our assessment data. Um, each trimester, that's one example. The other examples would be um. Counseling, mental health, social, emotional safety and supports are especially important for our, our really high need students. But we know that all this benefits all students in our district. Those types of, um, those actions. And then the last section was the specialized certificated support. We are one of the fewer districts that still have TK three, the class size reduction. At twenty to one for TK three. And we know that's a benefit for all of our, of our young learners, but for our high need students. When you have lower class sizes, it means that you have, a teacher can be more attentive and can really focus on, on their needs. Um, instructional assistants are in there, in there as well. And so then the second um, section um, kind of is a little bit, it's, it's, it's similar, but. A few of our actions really focus just on um, the unduplicated students, English learners or low income. And so the majority of these funds are just principally directed at that student group. And a couple of examples are the Fairsite School Readiness Center. Um, the, the dual language immersion program is specifically is really focused. On our, on our English learners, although I do have to say that students who are bilingual. Regardless of it's English or if it's Spanish, both groups of students are going to benefit by the dual immersion program. The Avid Program this year, it's really focused on our Losos Economic students. Um, but this year we also did increase it to one other school and that's Lake Canyon. So some of our supplemental and concentration, a little bit more is specifically focused just on those unduplicated groups. And then um, what I wanted to do is, Nicole, the last part was the student to staff ratios. Because we get that question often. For example, um, Valley Oaks. You, you may know, has quite a few additional instructional assistants, or maybe their class sizes are a little different. Um, a little smaller. Nicole, can you talk about that?
So it, it ties into the additional concentration grant dollars and what are you going to do with them? And basically they're used to provide that additional staff, whether it's um, bilingual instruction, office outreach assistance, social workers. On visitors. And what the, the goal of these ratios that you're providing is that sites that have over the fifty-five percent. Um, should have a lower staff to student ratio than those um, over fifty-five percent. It's kind of that correlation where those sites have a greater need, like Donna said, even having a lower class size. They have a greater need for additional support. And so you should see that the ratio um, to staff is lower. And so for example, the, the classified is twenty to one at a greater than fifty-five percent school and twenty-six to one. Fifty-five percent or less, so. They've now had us add those ratios.
Which were in prior.
Yeah, they were in prior LCAPS. That was new a couple of years ago.
I think the key to supplemental concentration, it's that kind of that phrase principally directed. That we really, this is, it's supplemental and, and Nicole often talks about your LCFF, what, what we, we, what we have to provide. Like textbooks, but if there was funding that went away, what would we not be able to provide? And that would be our supplemental concentration, that would be the extras. And although it is principally directed at, at our student groups, like our English learners and low income students. Um, truly, um, all of our students benefit by, by the majority of, of this type of funding. Because they're all take part in it.
Any questions on this portion? And then the next, the last section here is really the budget sections. Different tables for you that shows breakout of how much we're projected to spend um, based on. All of the actions, whether they're contributing. What sort and some of it's what source, whether it's state funds, LCFF, local funds, federal funds.
Pulls from all your data entry that you put in behind the scenes and it kind of makes the difference.
And for the student groups, you can either choose which student groups or you choose all. And so you're just saying all students, when you see the, the difference on the student groups. And then the very last are the directions. Like to read the directions on how you're supposed to complete, because that's in here for you too.
It is LCAP, I think, used to be, was it west, hundred thirty-eight pages? And then look at if we took out those directions, we're down to fifteen, fifty-six pages, so.
Try in the last, we've tried to condense things, trying to streamline. I'm studying. We, we, there were some, some of the times there were areas that we had too much data. We had the same data over and over again, all of the sections. And so we kind of cleaned that up a little bit this year.
They streamlined it also in this cycle, because it used to be you'd have, um, oh, we'd have to, to go back and show on. Exactly what we spent or the estimate of what we spent and then given. And so that part.
Just the layout change.
Layout was changed too. And so the exciting part is, is that uh, this next cycle. Layout was changed too. And so the exciting part is is that uh this next cycle, so to you know. During this next school year, which I won't be a part of, but I will be watching. I will be online. But you'll be able to con- consider our two um LCAP goals that we have currently. And you'll have the opportunity to decide if you want to um change the goals, add goals. It doesn't have to be two. At one point, we had four goals. And so you can do broad goals, you can do, you know, goals to break things up into smaller areas. But that'll be coming up next year.
Be interesting to see if they're going to put out a new template. If we're going to use the same template. Typically, every three years, there's a new template. Something, but. Feedback or public comments online?
We do not.
No, okay. Donna will do a public comment.
Questions.
A lot, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, team.
This is posted on the school website.
It is.
And we're up, I said, that people will be school too, so.
Yeah, we'll we'll be a link on the site websites too.
It will be translated. Once it's approved, we send it to Doc Tracking, our service, and they will translate. Translate it so it'll be in English and Spanish.
Questions or comments for two one two point four five nine? Move on to two one two point four six zero.
Move on to Nicole for the budget information.
Okay. Um there's, I'll go through the packet kind of like I did last time, since some of your new, this what they included and all of this. And so. Uh we include the PowerPoint first, and then after the pink divider, the first pink divider. This is the pocket budget that is developed by school services for really high level, what's going on in the state and what. A su- a summary of what you um got to see if you came to the May revise kind of thing. And then the next one is our budget. And what's included in here is um. We do a narrative and written assumptions that helps Scoby kind of know how we built our NYPD and what we've included in our budget. The next page is the NYPD. That's one of the the green stripe on it. And then um. The assumptions that were used to develop current year budget, that also helps Scott. Oh, I'm going in the different sections of just what's included in your packet. We're just at what's included in the packet. So after each clean divide, yeah. That's okay, just so that we know what's in here, so. And then just more narrative that helps go, you know, how you develop the budget. And then um the ones that you need bifocal for, you did all the SaaS forms. Um the new web software. It's it's cha- it's had its challenges and print jobs and things like that. And it is very small. It is um smaller than it used to be on. The other software. They used to have a desktop software and when they switch, so. And not much manipulation for us. So uh the budget. The budget board item, the page, it just goes over the same factors that were on the school services dartboard. And that I'll also be talking about in my presentation. So I'll go ahead and just skip that because it's just an overview. So we'll go on to the presentation. So why you doing the next slide? So this is just um showing the cola. So it may revise, the cola was, the colas were updated. Final factor came for current year, which made the current year. When I say current year, I mean budget year twenty-three, twenty-four, to the eight point two-two. And then it also updated the two out-year colas from what the January governor's budget had. I will point out that the LAO has been very vocal about the governor's budget. And um they do estimate that there's a two-thirds chance that. The state revenue estimates in the May revision are too optimistic and warns that. Under the governor's estimates and assumptions, the state could face sizable deficits through twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's just a predictor of theirs and their opinion based on their predictions. Next slide. Pension rates, uh STIRS has remained the same at the nineteen point ten for the last couple of years. PERS continues, PERS is usually your classified staff and occasionally have certificated staff. And that continues to rise. Uh next year, it's increasing by one point three one percent. The next year is one point oh two percent, and then the next year is point six percent. All of that represents a cost to the district. Um because this is our contribution to our employees' retirements.
Uh speaking of the pension rates, uh how many teachers did we have retired? This year?
This year? Under five.
Under five, yeah.
I have, a few teachers have reached out to me and asked if the district is considering that what we call kind of a golden handshake and incentive. Next year. Yeah, I I don't know. I so can't answer that right now. It's it's really something that we have to. Look into and it's not something you offer every year.
No.
And so.
It can be expensive to a district and you really have to do that analysis um how much you're saving in the long run. Uh next slide. So you've seen this one as far as the enrollment, and I decided to add uh the funded district ADA bar. Just because we've talked about the ADA cliff, we've talked about how during COVID, they tried to keep us from. Diving in our LCFF revenue, although our our enrollment was declining. And so you can really see that in nineteen twenty, that's what it should look like. Your enrollment should be greater than your ADA. Like we talked about before, if you're at ninety-two percent ADA, you should see a lower number in ADA than you do enrollment. Because it would be the enrollment times the ninety-two percent. But you notice in twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, where our enrollment started to decline. But that ADA still stayed above. And that was the state using all of those tactics to help us mitigate. The decline instead of just falling off a cliff. And then you see in twenty-two, twenty-three and beyond, that that starts to level out again. It starts to be enrollment. And then ADA being less. And because we are declining, it it just continues to go down. In this budget assumption, I use the same ninety-two percent for all three years. It's best to be conservative and think that your ADA is going to. Spike right back up to ninety-six percent. It's great if it does, but in a budget world, that could be detrimental to have those millions of dollars. Sitting there, you think you have and you don't. So um that is one of the assumptions that's in the written narrative. Um and basically, the the reduction in. Enrollment is as the kinder numbers are expected to decline based on birth rates. And that natural movement of those lower enrollment cohorts just starts taking all the other grade levels lower and lower. It also affects our high school district. You know, the less kids we have, the less kids they have. And so they're experiencing that same effect. Next slide. For our general fund revenues, seventy-five percent of our general fund revenues come from LCFF. That's that big green section. Um and then this budget includes about one point one million in one point, in one-time funds that are just carryover from last year. Um currently, there aren't a lot of one-time uh grants being proposed for twenty-three, twenty-four. It's just a spillover of the revenues. We've uh received in this year and prior years that we were allowed to spend over three, four, or five years. So we're not getting any revenue, but now we're going to spend those revenues that we've gotten previous years. Uh next slide. This is a graphical representation of the LCFF components. And you can see that the the largest part of the LCFF is the base grant and the grade span adjustment. That's the biggest chunk. And then based on your district, depends on how much stuff, you know, in concentration, you get based on your percentage. You can see, as I said earlier, it's about sixty percent. Um and then, Dawn, to top it off, is our transitional kindergarten add-on. And then the new home-to-school transportation add-on that uh we started receiving just this year. Uh next slide. So how does COLA equate to dollars for the district? And so districts receive dollars, not percentages. And so we, although the COLA may be eight point two-two percent, we're not receiving an additional eight point two-two percent on our current year LCFF. Especially as you can see, as our ADA goes down, it starts to fight itself for that that COLA. And you know, all of the COLA helps the decline in enrollment, or the decline in enrollment and the decline ADA chips away at that. And so you can see, like for twenty-three, twenty-four, we get an additional one point six million. But in percentage of change year over year, that's only four point two, although a COLA was applied of eight point two-two. And so on and so forth as you go down um year after year. So that's just a representation of how much we're actually getting dollar-wise year over year versus what the COLA that applied to the rate was. Next slide. This is a lot of information, so I'll make this more simple. So in the May revise, the biggest thing the governor wanted to do was slash the. Learning Recovery Block Grant and the Art Music Instruction Material Block Grant. And school services had estimated that the learning recovery reduction would be about thirty-two percent. And so we had a four point three million dollar grant. If you apply thirty-two percent, one point three million reduction. That would only gave us a two point nine million dollar grant instead of four point three. And that's, you know, that's a sizable amount of one-time funds we could have done something with. The other estimate was if the art, music, and instructional was reduced to what the governor wants to. Just what we've currently received would be all we've received. It would sweep the rest of it. And so the one point nine million of our original grant, we would have only gotten the nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand that we've received. And this was to be used for our math textbook adoption, which is about two million dollars. And so any reduction to this is going to be offset by the general, by the unrestricted general fund to make up the difference for that textbook adoption. So.
And what Nicole has in the budget right now is still the four point three.
Yes, part of the written assumptions. Yes, so part of the written assumptions are just that it's it's in there that way. And so. If um the legislature is currently proposing to significantly reduce those cuts, and so if that occurs, that will mainly help us. And so right now, you wouldn't necessarily jump the gun and take that money out. So depending on whatever gets, uh the legislature's already passed there, so it's in the governor's hands now. And depending on whatever he decides, then we can do a forty-five day. It's not a full budget revision where you get the whole sacks and everything. It's just more of an updated NYPD. This is pay, here's the couple of changes from the final budget that we're illustrating. How it's going to change what we presented to you in June. And that usually comes in in August.
He has to sign the budget here this month, by the end of the month.
Yeah, so, so we start thinking about that after that. That's the only two things that last year, there were quite a few other assumptions we did not put in the budget because it was just so uncertain. And then the forty-five day, we put this down. Ironically, they were not putting in these grants. Then we put them in and then now they want to cut them. And then now, so. So uh next slide please. So this is the graphical of our expenditures. And so our expenditures, salary and benefits are always the largest chunk of a district's budget. Ours is eighty-three point uh three-six. And it also includes three point six million in one-time funding expenditures for revenues previously received. So this is what I was saying. So for example, the Learning Recovery Block Grant, we've received the four point three million this year in twenty-two, twenty-three. We're not going to spend four point three million this year, so it's going to roll over into fund balance. You're not going to see any more revenue, but you're going to see us start to spend the money. So it's going to look like we're deficit spending. But we're just spending our beginning balance of multi-year grants. And so that's kind of how that works. Uh next slide. This was in in last um last times and we kind of put it in for, you know, the newer board members to understand the difference between unrestricted and restricted funds. And so unrestricted funds are just those that are, you can pretty much spend them on anything not prohibited by law. So that's our LCFF, our unrestricted lottery. Restricted funds are are legally restricted by donor or specific grant stipulations. And so that's things like restricted lottery, Title One, special ed, things like that. And then fund balance, as you also hear, reserves is um the unspent funds at the end of the year, whether they're unrestricted or restricted. And then they they're required to fall into these pots of non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, unassigned. So lots of different pots they can fall into. Uh next slide. So this one was also new last time. This is an expanded version of your collapsed NYPD. So your NYPD shows you one column, which is the total of these two columns for each year. This expands it out to unrestricted and restricted. And so um. And we 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 brought this to your attention because unrestricted and restricted are different. With restricted. You're not spending any more than you get. You just might be spending it in a different year. And so, for example, in twenty-three, twenty-four. For restricted, you start with a nine point one million dollar fund balance. Well, that is just grants waiting to be spent, that you have three, four, some of them are five years to even spend. So no more revenue comes in, just expenditures. And so right above it, you're like, oh, we're deficit spending by nine twenty-four. Well, that's okay, because we're supposed to, we're supposed to spend these beginning balances. They're not meant to sit there. They're not part of the reserve we we have over here for economic uncertainty and and unrestricted. Where the concern can come in is when you're unrestricted. Net increase or decrease is a decrease. Sometimes you you saved last year two million to build a building, and this year you're spending it. So you'll have a two million dollar deficit because you're saving, you know, you're spending your beginning balance. Other times, if this continues and it's and it's a great amount of money, what's happening is you're spending beyond your means and you're going to deplete your reserve. And so you just have to know which one you're doing type thing. And so for us, for twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see we are unrestricted is positive, the six forty-two oh eleven. And then it it dips a little bit in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's us putting in some um predictors. Like this year, professional development is being paid from one-year funds or for one-time funds. Next year, one-time funds. Well, what about twenty-four, twenty-five? Well, we're going to have to pay for those out of unrestricted. And so you kind of have to flip-flop. Those expenditures, but that's one time and it's professional development. And you don't necessarily have to do it if you didn't necessarily have the money. So as long as you know what your components are that you're putting in there, then you can feel comfortable that you have the means to pay for what you need to. And there are things that you could not pay for if you didn't have the funding. And so that's what this slide kind of represents and it kind of gives you that that breakout. Um and and with restricted, I will say, we've got eighty percent of our fund balance in restricted is three grants. They're just massive. It's learning recovery, it's the art and music instructional, and it's ELOP. They they're, they're just kind of sitting there to be spent over multiple years. And so it looks like a lot of money, but it's really. A representation of three big gr- grants and the rest of them have little tiny balances type things. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. So as the years go on, three, four, or five years out, you're not going to see those types of balances anymore unless the state gives you another huge one-time grant. And those will start to come back to normal and it'll be more normal spending patterns in there.
Like, for example, that fund balance in twenty-five, twenty-six, the five point seven million, that's more of a normal. Fund balance, it's getting back to. Kind of normal for a district our size.
Yeah, and what's what's bumping it up in twenty-five, twenty-six is the current lack of ELOP. Planned expenditures. They're they're getting more money statewide. People are like, take this money back. They're giving them more money than they. Know what to kind of spend it on in the program. And so I think collectively as districts collaborate. And and kind of get in the groove of spending this money, it won't be that bad. But this is our first year of ramp up in this program. And because of that, no one has grand ideas of how to spend this yet. And so we may figure that out next year and then that won't be there. But currently, if I don't have, if I don't know if you're going to spend it on, we're going to put it in budget yet. You're just gonna do that once you know. So that's why you see it tick back up in that third year. Next slide. So this is the general fund unrestricted reserve levels. What this makes up is your um. Sorry, mine's bigger. What what this makes up, if you look at your NYPD page, you have three different unrestricted pots. You have your committed, your assigned, and your unassigned, and they all mean different things. And so. These are our reserve levels for the combined total of all of those for these years. I also put in here the. I also put in here the twenty one, twenty two statewide average from school services for elementary school districts. And that's twenty five point three two. So it's not something that's uncommon right now. Uh, people are still re-sizing honestly from COVID. And all the the one time funds they're spending that they, you know, maybe used to spend in their unrestricted, taking advantage of them. Um, and so. If you. We'll finish the presentation and then we'll go over the NYPD and touch on them again. So the next slide. Those are just our budget cycle diagram and and where we are now. So where we are now is we're in June. And we're going to adopt the twenty three, twenty four budget. And then um in August and September, we're going to wrap up this year and then the forty five day budget revisions I talked about. Uh, next slide. So just what's next is um as I said before, July, Ju- July and August, we will be closing the books for twenty two, twenty three. In August, September, the auditors come out to finish up our audit. They've already been here for their interim work. And then September is the board approval of the un-audited actuals. And um budget revisions can come in August or September. It just depends. There was one year that. The trailer bills just kept coming and that just kept getting delayed. And so uh it can go either or in that. So is there any questions on the PowerPoint before we move to the NYPD, other than what we're going to talk about on the NYPD?
I just had a general question. I'm not sure where the better place for is. So then as you go through negotiations, if there's. Increased costs as part of. Negotiations, how does that get accounted for into the budget?
So what we do is we take. If we we start negotiations, say in September, and so by then we're going to apply. Anything that comes out of the adopted, the governor signs the budget, we're going to apply any major changes from that. The good thing is is no one's arguing the cola or the funding of LCFF. So that shouldn't change those markers so much. It's more these restricted. One time funds over here. So we should put those changes into the NYPD. Then the NYPD has formulas built in that you can put in different percentages and see how it affects your bottom line. And so as we put in those percentages. If um like on the NYPD, how you have your. Your unrestricted unassigned, which that's that nine percent that I talked about in the board policy, that's a board policy, it's the line right above your green line. Um, if say we were doing that and we put in five percent and it took that to five percent, like hmm, that's, you know. It's not what we can do because that goes against the policy of the nine percent. And so this is a formula thing in the spreadsheet that you use as you negotiate.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, any compensation we end up giving this next year will ultimately end up lowering the reserve.
So on the NYPD, as I said, let me get to one that. That's the one after the pocket budget. There's the little title page. There's a narrative page and yes, the one with the green stripe.
The green and green.
For the green, green stripe. Yeah. And so, you know, mine's bigger just because it's expanded and that's why I put that slide in there so that you guys can see the, you know. The pertinent lines of the unrestricted and restricted. And so the the budget's built based on the ADA projections that we do and the colas that the state gives us. Basically, that's our chunk of the LCFF dollars. Everything else is just a matter of taking in and out one time grants and just kind of updating those as they're spent and added. Uh, that's how revenue kind of design. And then in the out years, you make sure you take them out or put them in. Based on, you know, if you spent them or not. So then the expenditures, same thing, we have a position control system that develops the. Initial salaries, I will say, since this budget has been developed, we've added more positions. And so those positions will be added into, say, the forty five if they're significant, and if they're not, probably first, and then it would be first interim. But things keep rolling, you know, even when by the time you get to this, we've already done, you know, X, Y, and Z and A, B, C all over again. Um. And so it's a point in time and um and then we adjust each year for things like step and column and uh per STIRS, just different things like that. And then uh same thing for books and supply services capital outlay. It's either in or it's out for the year. Make sure you're taking out, putting in your one time funds. And then um you have contributions, the bit, the six point three million. That is made up of special ed are required three percent to routine repair and maintenance. And if you have anything else to food nutrition, our food nutrition is self sufficient in the black, so we don't have to contribute to fund thirteen or anything like that. And then the um. The net increase decrease is the one you see on your slide. Your slide breaks it out and then this is the combined total of that. So it's it's easier on the slide to know what's restricted and what's unrestricted. So you can kind of be able to go, oh, yeah, we're spending all that one time money we got last year, you know, and and you can see that in a restricted. So back to the reserves that we were talking about. Um. And that's why there's a kind of a new green line is that the reserve cap keeps getting triggered by the amount of money that the governor has in his. His rainy day. Acronym. Pot of money. And so when that happens and it's over a certain amount of money, it triggers us to um only have. A total in our unrestricted of ten percent. And it means that. That is our assigned and unassigned only. So you see how our reserve for twenty three, twenty four is the twenty point two eight. Which was from the slide. Well, only ten percent of that can be assigned and unassigned. So what it triggers is you have to start committing funds. And so that was brand new last year. And it requires uh a resolution each year to say, we're going to commit to these things. Um, and I'll explain more tomorrow when we have that board item. But for now, we kept it the same uh as it has been. So we're committing funds to textbook adoptions, technology upgrades and replacements. And facilities. So the difference between the twenty point two eight and the ten that you're capped at has to be committed. And so that's what develops those numbers. It's just math. And um you are still in control of what you commit for. It's still yours to, you know, do as you direct. It's just in a different pot. Than it used to be. So those bottom line uh reserve percentages match the ones that were in. And then the the CDE forms are just the CDE forms. They're just a mechanism for CD to collect your data electronically.
And there's an action item tomorrow. With a resolution for the committed funds. Yes, very same as last last year. Last year was the first time we had to do that.
It's like date updating, you know, update the year and then the day of the board meeting and all of that type of stuff. And then if you ever wished to commit them differently, then it gets taken back to board. As a board action to commit to other things and then a new reservation.
So you don't have to wait a year to do that. You could do it the next month or in six months if there was something that came up. Okay.
That other slide is very helpful because it's a very like, that's apples to apples and oranges to oranges. This is a bunch of fruit. So that 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 makes it.
Yeah.
Very, very exciting.
It's just hard. It's just a nicer summary than, I mean, you see how large this is. You have to look at every single line. So it's just a, here's the revenue, here's the expense, but it gives you that bigger picture.
Yeah. And if we have already settled, which usually we're not settled by first interim, but say we were settled with the unions by first interim. Then you would see these reserves at a different level and your committed. Balance, the percentage you would need to commit will probably be lower too. If, but we'll see if we're, usually we're not settled by first interim. It's usually second interim. Um, but you never know. Could be settled.
Are there any questions?
All the information.
Mm hmm. So tomorrow night, we won't go in this depth for either one of these action items. We won't kind of just. We'll publicly, you know, explain that we did this at our our public hearing. Um, I might summarize just the um. I might go ahead and summarize again the feedback that we did get from the public on the LCAP. I'll do that and I'll report that we did not receive any additional. Comments or feedback at our meeting tonight for either LCAP or the budget. Um, we could possibly have feedback tomorrow as well. Uh, but that's, we definitely won't spend the time on this like we did. Tonight, um but you definitely can still ask questions um tomorrow night as well. Before this is presented for the vote.
Thank you, thank you for that. Information and then uh so there's no other. Pointing this record will close the public hearing on. Two one, two point four six zero. And then uh we'll go on to E. Is there any other public comment? Or no, it's not with the angelic.
No, there's no.
On there and then uh. That is me, it's just depending on the, I haven't you guys, but I could. See, it's best. You know, on there. And if you can.
We do, we have one. We just just ran.
That's all right.
We didn't put down here.